... as blood recipient and our own volunteer and city employee, Mr. Bill Matson, who are going to update council on the Partners for Life program. So, welcome ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nice to have you.
Mayor Salsi and honourable council members, I'm here to thank the city of Niagara Falls for becoming a Partners for Life with Canadian Blood Services in 2008. This partnership speaks volumes to the community of Niagara Falls as Canadian Blood Services relies on the support of individual donors and Partners for Life groups to ensure that there's enough blood for local patients in need year-round. Through the Partners for Life program, city employees commit to donating a set number of blood units each calendar year. Today, there are 25 city employees registered as Partner for Life members and they've donated a total of 144 units. Well, if you, I'm not sure if you're aware, but each unit of blood can actually help save or extend up to three lives, so that 144 donations equals 432 patients that are being helped. Their lives are either being saved or extended. Canadian Blood Services would like to continue to encourage the city employees, their families and friends, who have considered becoming blood donors to get started. The city of Niagara Falls holds 24 blood donor clinics annually, and there are many more across the region. You have a champion on staff, Bill Matson, who can assist you with your Partners for Life number, as well as offer suggestions on how you can further engage staff to donate. Employees can call 1-880-DONATE, or they can go to our website at www.ludca.ca to find out more information about donating or to book an appointment. Canadian Blood Services is very proud to be linked with such a committed and valuable partner, and we thank you for your continued support. At this time, I would like to invite Chantelle Chisant to come forward. Chantelle is a blood recipient, as well as a volunteer for Canadian Blood Services, and she's here to share her story with you this evening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you for having me today here, council. I just wanted to thank everybody for having me and let you know that I've been a lifelong resident of Niagara. I've currently moved to Stone Creek, but I still like coming and speaking on behalf of Canadian Blood Services and sharing my story. In 2005, I was 22-years-old and I was faced with a very serious illness, which is also a very rare illness. It's called thrombotic thromocytopenic pura, and it's one of those one-in-a-million diseases. At that time, I knew little about blood donations or blood product recipients, but I quickly became one. Blood therapy is the only known therapy for my disease, and I received in just two months over 40 blood transfusions. So, when we're talking in units of blood, that's a large, large amount of blood. I was receiving daily transfusions through plasma ferocystis, which is another program that Canadian Blood Services deals with. Primarily with whole blood donation, though, I now speak on behalf of Canadian Blood Services throughout the region, as well as Niagara, Halton, Hamilton. Just raising awareness about the need for blood, because it is always there, and blood is in us to give. The Partners for Life program is great, because as a blood donor recipient, I can never donate. So, what I do is I go and I speak on behalf of Canadian Blood Services, raising awareness, getting people more involved, because it is a great thing to be able to put a face to the cause that you're helping, and that's me. So, we have a couple of events here in Niagara, as well as in Halton and Hamilton, where we promote the Partners for Life program, which I know you guys are all aware of now. So, all I can do is encourage you to donate, because, you know, it does save up to three lives in my case. I needed a lot more product, and the need will always be there for me if I am to get sick again or I need surgery. So, thank you all. If you have donated in the past, and if you can get out and become a part of our program, that'd be really great, because you are saving lives every day. So, thank you so much for having me here today, and hopefully become a regular donor, and I'll see you at other events.
Thank you, Chantelle. Bill?
Thank you, Janet and Chantelle. It's appreciated that you could share your story with us. I just wanted to speak for a few minutes on the role of the city staff as far as blood donations. The Partners for Life program was introduced, as Janet said, a few years ago, and we have been very successful in every year that we've been involved in the program. We have not only raised our goal, but also met and exceeded our goal. We've got a few staff even just sitting around the room here that are involved. I know that Mr. Arifida, Mr. Todd, Mr. Holman, Mr. Hurlovich are all regular donors and help contribute towards the campaign. Basically, what we're doing is we're just trying to encourage those blood donors within the municipalities and that work for the corporation to continue to donate blood. You can donate up to six times a year for most people when you're donating whole blood. And we just want to provide an opportunity for any of those who may even be thinking of donating blood to perhaps go along with a coworker, stop and ask questions. You may have heard me say this before, but when I had a few guys from my ball team come over, one of the gentlemen on the ball team said, "If I'd known it was going to be that easy, I would have started a long time ago." So, a very simple statement, but I think a statement that holds a lot of weight. Just to point out, locally, we do have clinics Saturday, April the 17th, and that's from 9:00 until 1:00 at St. Andrews Church, and again on Monday, April 26th, from 1:00 until 8:00 at Optimus Club. So, I just want to encourage those within the municipality that are working for the city to continue to donate. If there's anyone out there that's thinking of donating, by all means, just contact me and I can pass on some more information. But, as Chantelle's even pointed out, you don't need a story like hers to go out and give you cause to donate. You may just, you know, recognize the need and go and donate on your own.
And Bill, do you want to share with the council and those present how many contributions you've made or donations you've made?
I'm currently at 62 donations.
Congratulations.
And again, there's no reason for my donating. I think I just, I've seen my father donate. His father was a donator. Luckily, we've been fortunate and not been touched in our family for someone that has been in the need for blood, but at the same time, I think our family over the generations have recognized the need in the community, and just taking that one hour, once a month to roll up your sleeve and don't have blood.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation and your comments this evening. Members of council, any questions further? Okay. Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. Remember the council, our next deputation is from Wellspring Hope Fund. This evening, we have the executive director of Wellspring Niagara, Ms. Ann Mantini, along with Liz Palmieri from the Niagara Community Foundation, and our very own Alex Hurlovich, who's going to make a brief presentation to council and show a brief video. So, we'll call for the video first. Is that right, Alex? Or are we going to do it?
Sure, let's see the video.
Welcome to Wellspring Niagara, a regional cancer support center for those living with cancer. Both a patient, a family member, close supporter, friend, we are here to offer emotional, psychological, informational and spiritual support, free of charge. No one is turned away. It is a welcoming environment, filled with happy faces, friendly smiles, love, support When you come through these doors, you're looking for something, you're looking for support, you're looking for quality of life, improvement of quality of life.
It's going to be an overwhelming diagnosis, and it brings up huge issues, emotional issues, psychological issues, social issues. And although someone's going through treatment quite successfully in our clinic, we can only do so much in the clinic setting. We're seeing people on a schedule, week by week. There's so much that has to be done in between, and that's where the support services are so important and so useful. The public system can do a lot, but only so much. There's a lot of need beyond that that the privately funded and charitable service organizations can provide. I have noticed a difference when patients have gone to Wellspring during their treatment in how they're able to cope with things.
All cancers have a common thread of some things that are hard to deal with, and Wellspring gives you the ability to talk about those things in a very comfortable, relaxed atmosphere, non-medical. There's nobody telling you what to do or what not to do. It's just friendship.
You walk in the door and it's just very comfortable. You don't feel the least bit intimidated.
If you think you need help, and you're the only one that will ever know that you need help, then Wellspring is a place that you can go. You can feel safe here, you can feel secure, you can feel free to share your feelings with, without being embarrassed. I'm not saying that it won't be uncomfortable, because it does take something for a man, I think, to, a little more than it does for a woman to come out of her shell and talk about feelings, but I really, truly, deep down believe that it can benefit men.
This is the place to let it out and talk to others. Depending on your cancer, there's different men up here with different types of cancer, and they'll talk to you about your cancer. You're going to see someone that's helping, and that's hope. Nothing but hope for that person. They're going to feel good. They really do.
The facilitator we have here at Wellspring has been very good at giving us all tools to help us move beyond the breast cancer.
You have to learn how to live again. You have to learn how to think again and not be so afraid.
We are a regional cancer support center, and we're here for all residents of the Niagara region.
I don't get paid here at Wellspring, except in hugs and smiles, and that's the most important part to me.
Wellspring's a safe port in the storm of cancer. It's just a place you can come and talk and be with people and enjoy.
My brother had passed away February 28th, 1999. That's at that time, he had made me promise to continue with his dream and his plans to develop a cancer support center here in Niagara. We were able to open the center and begin programming in June of 2001. I know my brother Aldo would be so proud of what we're doing here at Wellspring. I'm grateful that he did see that there was a need and that he passed the torch to me to establish this organization. I wish he was here today to see it. I wish he would have, could have benefited from it, but he lives on in everyone that walks through these doors, and I'm very proud of him.
And I thank Ann Mantini for providing the video to us, and I don't know, I feel a little shaken every time I watch that video. There's a part of me that wishes that I'd never had to use Wellspring's services, and yet there's a part of me that's forever grateful that Wellspring was here, that they provided counseling and support services to me during my late wife's battle with cancer. And it was because of that that I really became committed to Wellspring and to supporting their efforts. Many people know that I'm a peer support volunteer at their offices a few evenings a month. And a year ago, council supported me in a plan to set up an endowment fund that would provide perpetual contributions to Wellspring's for their programs, and in terms of their operating programs at the facility. As you heard from Ann, it is a regional cancer center, serving residents of all of Niagara region, and certainly I want to make the residents of Niagara Falls aware that the facility exists as well. You heard from Dr. Hughes, who said that the medical treatment that's provided by the oncology clinic can provide only so much, and that they observed that those who have attended Wellspring and participated in the programs have actually had a very positive or more positive treatment because of their support that they received from Wellspring. So, it really is an important community foundation. So, a year ago, council supported me in my quest to set up an endowment fund, and with that, we went out to the community seeking pledges to fund my running, to raise money. Our goal was to raise $10,000 over a three-year period, and I'm happy to report that we raised $13,000 last year alone. And so, I want to thank publicly all of those who contributed, because it really made a difference. And that's our purpose tonight. It's time to give back to the community that gave so generously. But I also want to say that I have a goal this year of running as well. I'm running 12 races, one a month. I've never done that before. My maximum has only ever been eight. In the last few years, it's one or two races. Those races are anywhere from five kilometers to, I'm hoping to do a full marathon. For those who know about my quest to conquer all five, or all seven continents and run a marathon in every continent, my next quest is Marrakech, Morocco, for northern Africa. And so, that's several months away, so I have training to do in between. But certainly, I've run three races so far this year. I'm going to do Run for the Hills in Short Hills Provincial Park later this month. It's a 10-kilometer race, half marathon in Grand Island in May. So, those are among my most immediate goals, and our goal is, of course, to build the fund. For those who have ever seen my license plate, it says loves to run. That's primarily what I, why I'm running, using something that I enjoy to give back. The second thing is because of Wellspring, and you saw the video and the important work it does. And the third thing, as planning director, I know that communities are more than just buildings and subdivisions. It's the support services out there, it's the people who give back, contribute to the community that really make our city a success. And so, it's important that we be able to provide these facilities in our city. And so, I'm pleased to have Liz Palmieri with me today from the Niagara Community Foundation, and she's going to present a check to Wellspring, and I wonder if we could come up front and do that.
Sure. Could I ask Ann and Liz to come forward, please, to join us? I want to welcome Liz to this meeting as well, and she's making a presentation. Why don't you come over to this side? You're going to get the computer's attention. So, I'll turn it over to Liz.
So, as Alex said, it's an endowment fund, and it's the earnings on the endowment fund that will be paid perpetually to Wellspring. And so, this is the first payment of $500, and that's towards programs that are taking place, and you saw some of them certainly in the video. And we're really pleased. What Alex has done is really quite unique, and there's actually going to be something else announced in a couple of months, about another Niagara Falls unique way of raising funds for endowment, which is very involved in the community. So, we're really happy to be able to be working with Alex and with Wellspring.
That's great. Well, thank you so much. I want to say just, first of all, thank you to Alex for his efforts in doing and creating this fund for us, for Wellspring, through the Niagara Community Foundation. This money does go a long way. As a charitable organization, we rely 100% on the community we serve. We don't receive any government funding, and we're not supported by any other cancer-related charity. We are solely supported by you, the community, and Alex certainly is, you know, leading the way in helping us raise the funds that we need so desperately. Since opening our doors in June of 2001, we've registered now over 25,000 program attendances from men, women and children who are living with cancer. In the month of March alone, we registered over 45 new individuals who were diagnosed with cancer, and we know that's a small percentage of people that have been diagnosed in our region. So, we see the growth. It's happening, and unfortunately, the need is there, but we're committed to helping those who are living or diagnosed with this disease, or a loved one who's been diagnosed, and helping them through their journey, and hopefully make it a little easier for them. And that's what we're here to do. So, thank you so much, Alex, and thank you, Mayor Salsi.
Can I just say one last thing as well? I want to match the grant that's here, and I have a check, my personal check, that I want to give to Ann this evening as well, to go along with us.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you. Just wanted to say, by my behalf, the members of council, you are directing an organization that makes the quality of life a lot easier for those people who have challenges, especially with healthcare, and we do appreciate your efforts on behalf of all those in the region. On behalf of members of council, I want to thank you for the good work that Wellspring is doing. We do support it, as you know, and we're pleased to do so. And Alex, we appreciate the fact that you're leading the way, literally. And Liz, thank you for the work you do with the foundation. So, on behalf of all the residents and members of council, I'd like to say thank you very much. We do have comments from members of council. Council Fisher?
Thank you. On your video, I saw Sue Bernier. Sue and a small group of women, such as her mom, are called the Happy Hookers.
Yes, ma'am.
The Happy Hookers make necklaces. Thank you very much, you wore one. In many, many colors. Every necklace is different. And how much have they raised?
Now over $200,000.
Thank you.
Five dollars a necklace.
And you'll see them everywhere. The necklaces can be found just about in every store, Falls Manor, and I don't know where else, and you can always contact Sue Bernier, and she's got them in all colors.
And her goal was to raise $500.
That's right.
And it's now, I would say it's international. The necklaces of Hope are international now.
Yes. And the women love to be called the Happy Hookers. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Member of council, our next deputation is the 2010 Power Pledge, and this evening we have from Niagara Peninsula Energy, Ms. Sue Forsey, who's going to outline to council Niagara Peninsula Energy's various conservation programs and the 2010 Power Pledge initiative. So, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to be here this evening on behalf of our Niagara Peninsula Energy Board of Directors, Council Wayne Thompson and Council Ryanone. The Ontario Power Authority is the arm of the Ministry of Energy, and its main mandate is to promote conservation throughout Ontario. So, they have put a challenge out to our city and our residents, a challenge to take the pledge, and one I am sure our city is willing to take on. The campaign objective is a province-wide, high-profile energy conservation awareness campaign that engages Ontarians to take simple conservation actions that will have lasting financial rewards and help fight climate change. Phantom power. Research shows Ontarians are looking for simple, high-value conservation actions, the next step to CFLs, the light bulbs. These are just some of the power bars that are available right now. This is a power bar that is, has a sensor timer in it, so you can automatically turn it off, and phantom power is DVDs, Xboxes, cell phones, all the things that you forget are plugged in, but the electricity is still ticking. What these types of power bars do is sense the phantom power and bring it down. So, your constant ones are still plugged in, but the other electronics will power down So, we want to bring that awareness to the residents. Phantom power that's wasted by electronic devices and appliances that use power even when they are turned off. Most Ontarians are not aware that many electric devices draw energy even when they have been turned off. Estimates phantom power represents as much as 15% of a household's annual electricity use. Power bars with timers and auto-shut offs, such as this one, or the power strip bar, which are available in department stores, are some effective ways to fight phantom power. The Power Pledge campaign will raise awareness and motivate Ontarians to take action and reduce the phantom power. Some of the campaign participants is the WWF Canada, Loyalty One Air Miles, and of course Niagara Peninsula Energy, Inc., municipalities throughout Ontario, and some chambers of commerce. The core concept is an online pledge, including six simple, meaningful and measurable conservation actions chosen to support the province-wide conservation program. Primary focus, using power bars to reduce phantom power. Additional pledges, if you're purchasing an Energy Star appliance, if you're doing a home energy audit, refrigerator freezer retirement program, which Niagara Peninsula Energy does, smarter laundry practices, efficient use and care for home heating and cooling, such as air conditioning or programmable thermostats. And the target is 150,000 pledges. That's the target that the Ontario Power Authority is looking for. So, they want to do a community challenge and a challenge day within our municipality. So, they're building on the Energy Conservation Week that was last year, and I know at the AMO conference last year, I'm not sure what municipality won, but we didn't win, but we're going to win this one. A four-month grassroots campaign in support of the province-wide community challenge will be from April 20th, Earth Week, to August 11th. The 2010 goal is 100-plus communities representing 80% of the population, and we're in a participation category of over 75,000 as a population. Winning communities announced and will be recognized at the AMO conference in Windsor. So, beginning April 7th, participants can register on powerpledge.ca for the Power Pledge and Challenge Day campaign. Key milestone dates, while the launch has occurred, it's an online registration. However, we will be having forums for people that are not on the internet and that can sign up. So, that will be available as we are kicking off Earth Week, April 17th, as a community challenge launched, and have a barbecue and food drive at Sarah's on Morrison Street, starting at 11:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. this Saturday, April 17th. We're going to kick off Earth Week. August 11th will be Community Challenge Day, which more details will follow in the next couple of months, and the Power Pledge campaign ends August 31st. So, we are hoping that we can get all residents signed up. It's just clicking on your, on the online form, or you can register through paper format also if you're not, do not have the internet. And the one great thing is, if you register and you are an Air Miles carrier, you receive 20 Air Miles points, and also 10 of the points, 10 additional points go to a charity of WWF, Special Olympics Canada, or Kids Help Home. So, 10 points will go towards a charity and 20 points if you're an Air Miles card carrier.
Thank you, Sue. We have some questions from members of council and comments. Council Ryanone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Sue, for coming for the presentation. What I'd like to see is the city of Niagara Falls partner with NPEI and join this Power Pledge campaign. So, I'd like to make a couple motions. One, that we, that the city of Niagara Falls partners with NPEI to be partners in the pledge.ca campaign.
Moved by Council Ryanone, seconded by Council Diodati. Okay? Any comments? You've heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To promote it, I'd also like to make a motion that we post it on the city website with a link to power.ca and a link to NPEI to learn the initiatives that are out there.
Okay. Seconded the motion, Council Diodati, once again. You heard the comments, or the question, any, I'm going to call the question, say any further comments before I do that, having seen none of those in favor. Motion's carried, thank you.
I suppose I could have done this all in one motion.
Yes.
And I'd also like to register the city as a participant. So, the city of Niagara Falls registers on power.ca so that we're a participant also.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, can you accomplish that for the city?
For sure.
Okay. Moved by Council Ryanone, once again, seconded by Council Diodati. Any further questions or comments by members of council, having seen none of those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
And I hope to see everyone out on Saturday, April 17th, to kick off Earth Week, and we'll have some nice earthly giveaways and help out our local food bank. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
Your Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning bylaw to permit a proposed, an official plan policy to allow the passing of a holding zone applicable to various properties located around the QEW and McLeod Road interchange. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, March 12th, 2010, and by posting a sign in the area. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process that's not applicable here, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you. This time, I would ask the Director of Planning to This time, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed amendment and bylaw, the official plan amendment and bylaw amendment as well. Mr. Hirlovich?
Thank you, worship. The lands in question, there are approximately 13 parcels of land that are affected by the area around the interchange of the QEW and McLeod Road. These are primarily commercial lands, many of which are already developed with a form of development, some of which are still vacant. The lands in the surrounding area are also identified or developed with commercial uses. In addition, the lands also include a portion of the property that's McBain Center, as well as the Niagara Falls Highgo property. The official plan is on the screen in front of you. The dark red represents the major commercial land use, the crosshatch red or lighter red color as the, are tourist commercial lands. The blue boundary around some of those parcels identify the areas that are affected by the amendment to the official plan, which introduces a holding provision into the official plan, dealing with the upgrading of the street system. A little bit of background, there's a significant amount of development anticipated in the near future around that interchange. The various studies were being conducted by Niagara Region and identified that improvements needed, are needed to accommodate the amount of additional traffic that will be generated by these commercial developments. The commercial developments are all expected to contribute financially to those improvements. The owners, some of the owners, the ones that I outlined with the blue outline, have not yet contributed. And so, the developers who have actually already contributed have asked for this official plan amendment, and it will run for a 10-year period. We had a neighborhood open house meeting in January of this year. Two property owners were present. There were no objections received. Because the Queen Elizabeth Way is a, is the responsibility of the Ministry of Transportation, they have a land use control over any development that goes on within 1,300 feet of that interchange, and they are therefore, they provide a land use permit before any building permit can actually be provided by the city in order to obtain some of the development that was going on in that area. It's estimated that there's $3.8 million worth of improvements needed to the bridge over the QEW, as well as the on-and-off ramps and the widening of McLeod Road. So, various consortium of commercial landowners got together. They provided letters of credit for the $3.8 million to the region. They entered into a cost-sharing agreement with each other, with the city, with the region that's currently being finalized with the Ministry of Transportation. The agreement provides then a formula by which the other property owners will be charged for their proportionate share to that $3.8 million contribution. In order to ensure that everyone pays their fair and equitable share, official plan and zoning amendments are needed for holding provisions. The official plan currently has holding provisions in it. That official plan provides for holding provisions to be used for the orderly development of the area, to phase development, to provide servicing infrastructure. So, certainly, all of these areas are part and parcel of the interchange improvements that have to go on. But we also want to add the additional condition that the landowners who have not yet contributed will be expected to contribute towards that interchange improvement, should they proceed within the next 10 years. The zoning of the subject lands are shopping center commercial, general commercial, and tourist commercial. So, an H symbol will be added to the front of all of those zones as it affects those 13 properties. The H symbol will be in effect for a 10-year period. If the landowner chooses to proceed with any of his development, he would then enter into the cost-sharing agreement, and the H symbol will be lifted from his parcel of land so that he can proceed with the development. The H symbol doesn't interfere with any of the current uses of the land. For instance, you might have seen that Niagara Square is an area that's currently under, would be under this H symbol, so the mall is basically unaffected. But they do have expansion potential, and should they expand their shopping center beyond the development that you see that's currently going on, then they would, would also have to contribute towards those improvements. It doesn't affect the lands that are yet to be developed with the Canadian Tire at that Niagara Square site. They've already contributed their share through the existing cost-sharing agreement. So, therefore, the, there are a number of new commercial developments anticipated that we think will impact the QEW and McLeod Road interchange, the improvements, the developers wish to proceed with the developments, they, they've already entered into the cost-sharing agreement. The holding symbol will be applied to those other lands that will benefit once the improvements are done. And so, this will ensure that everybody contributes fairly inequitably. The recommendation, therefore, is that council approve the official plan and zoning amendment applications, and the passing of a zoning bylaw, place a holding symbol for a period of 10 years or until the landowner enters into the agreement to contribute to the improvements to the QEW, McLeod Road interchange. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hirlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign, the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 17, subsection 24 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed, proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment. And we'd like you to come forward to state your name and address, if you would, please. So, anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak is welcome to do so at this point. Once again, anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak, please come forward. Okay? Any questions from members of council? Counselor Diodati?
Yes, worship. I have a question for Mr. Hirlovich regarding the letter that we received from McDonald's of Canada. Mr. Hirlovich, through you, Mr. Chair. They asked some questions in regard to assumptions that contributions have already been made by smart centers, as well questions about the northwest side of the highway where that was not included. And I just wondered if we had some answers to that letter.
Mr. Hirlovich?
The, yeah, the, the agreement and the concern actually deals with commercial, so answering your last question first, Counselor Diodati. The reason that the northwest corner of the QEW and McLeod was not affected is those lands are zoned and designated industrial in the official plan. So, those are the lands between Kinsman Court and the QEW. Because they're not commercial, they don't generate the same kind of traffic volumes that a shopping center would. So, you know, you can imagine a new Walmart, you can imagine, don't have to imagine Niagara Square. The lands that are owned by Villa Boy to the west of the McBain Center will also be developed as a shopping center. So, they generate significant traffic volumes. So, that's why those lands were not included. McDonald's did contribute towards some improvements at the intersection of Oakwood and McLeod for their existing development. And so, those funds will be used or have been used for those intersection changes. But should they expand or change their operations, then they would be subject to the holding agreement and contributing further. The smart centers south of there, I think you were asking about their contribution, they are paying their proportionate share for their shopping center that's being put in, and in fact, are one of the parties that have basically front-ended the amount of money that would be needed for all the other properties. So, hope that answers the questions. Okay? Thank you.
Excuse me. Yes, one other part. So, if some of the other parts that are maybe industrial today, if later they choose to seek rezoning and they come into this commercial sector, would they then be asked to contribute as well?
Yeah, okay. Solicitor's going to ask you.
I would anticipate that smart centers would be in here, hard to be appearing to say that they would like that council to consider it. The party's most certain of the issue is this board, but the party doesn't have the role as far as to build up anybody who's thought of this on board. We're not anticipating rezoning industrialized, because they're so valuable.
Counselor? Counselor Peter Anzal?
Thanks, your worship. And a question through you to Mr. Hirlovich. We're being asked to place an H symbol on these lands for a period of 10 years or until the owner of the lands enter into an agreement to make contributions. And my question would be, what happens if after 10 years, they still didn't make any contributions or they didn't develop the land? Does the H symbol then disappear, and then they're allowed to develop the land without contributing?
Mr. Hirlovich?
I don't know whether our solicitor knows the terms from that agreement.
Yes, that's right. They can develop, just mayor, the lands could be developed without any further contribution. And that is, in fact, the agreement between developers themselves. They are not looking for a contribution from a developer that develops outside the territory. These particular developers are big concerned, the streetholders upon their work. They are concerned, make our smart centers, because their attendance attracts business to the area, they are concerned about competitors piggybacking on their efforts. And they feel that after the 10-year period, further commercial development will not have actually been, there's conflict, but that's not piggybacking on that. That's coming from another unit, as other than the fact that they've established their development. And that's what they find, kind of offensively, they contribute money to this interchange, is that they're afraid that other people who are competing for sales from them will come in and benefit from the interchange specifically because their operation is attracting customers to the area. But they feel that after 10 years, that effect is not.
Okay. Counselor? Counselor Janice Wing?
My question was the same as Counselor Peter Anzal.
Okay. Fine, thank you. Are there any further questions from the council or persons present with respect to this proposed amendment? No further questions? And having seen none in the official, the public meeting with respect to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Moved by Counselor Ianone, seconded by Counselor Wing, moving the recommendation. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's carried, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
Your worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of vacant land condominium at 8891 and 8931 Forest View Boulevard. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, March 19th, 2010, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chambers.
And once again, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose of this application. Mr. Hirlovich?
The, your worship, this application is for a vacant land condominium at the, on the north side of Forest View Boulevard, immediately east of Garner Road. On the map in front of you, there's a vacant parcel of land showing in white. That's a stormwater retention pond, if you've been there. And further to the west are the lands of the Niagara Falls Golf Club. The lands to the north are the lands of the Sundowner and other commercial uses along Lundie's Lane. The lands to the west are part of the Deerfield Plan of Subdivision. The lands in question involve two blocks of land to be used as a vacant land condominium. The layout of the property is for 107 townhouse units that would be developed on a private road system with, with general amenities and common elements to the condominium corporation. The applicant, the lands in question are 2.9 hectares, 7.2 acres of land, as I mentioned, 107 planned townhouse units. The plan of condominium is called a vacant land condominium. This is where the owner individually owns the land and the driveway on which the unit is located, but the landscaped areas and other elements are common to condominium corporation. The, the Planning Act requires that there be a public meeting, and that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. The recommendations are that the vacant land condominium, the draft approved, subject to conditions that are included in Appendix 1 of the support. But basically, all other elements have been addressed through the Plan of Subdivision, which originally created these two blocks. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hirlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the draft plan of, draft plan of vacant land condominium. And we'd like you to come forward and state your name and address, please, for the record. So, anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak is welcome to come forward. Please come forward.
Good evening, your worship.
Your name and address, please.
Donna Bongers and John Bongers, 6104 Garner Road. We are the square, the red square that's right beside the water management pond.
Okay. Thank you.
The question that we have, when we see in the original plans, that there was no playground in the original plans. And our concern is, is that playground will be backed on to the fence of the water management pond. And we're concerned about hangout, and young children may be trying to climb the fence to get into the pond if there's not any supervision that's there. So, that is our question.
Is there anything else? Is that it?
The only other question that we do have is along the tree line that's behind our house, they will be putting in a row of condominiums all the way down. Will there be a fence that goes in behind those condominiums that will also connect to the black fence that is adjacent to the pond?
Okay. Got to answer those for you. Close the timer, Mr. Hirlovich. Do you want to address that with respect to the site plan?
I'm not sure that I have the directions quite the...
You want the location of Mrs. Bongers' property? Mrs. Bongers, you care to just elaborate again?
Thank you very much.
You see that little black square that, right behind Garner Road?
Yes.
That's our home.
Okay. And so, immediately to your side is a stormwater pond.
Correct.
And there's a fence around the stormwater pond.
Right now, there's a black chain link, five-foot fence around that pond.
Yes. And so, that stormwater pond was established through the Plan of Subdivision, has actually nothing to do with this plan of condominium. And the fence was put up to keep people out of the pond.
Okay.
I'm not saying that people won't, you know, people will go into a department store and steal things, but, you know, hopefully, the majority of people don't.
I can understand the fence is put up for safety. Our question is, will the condominium proposal, will that be fenced in as well?
Yeah, so we'll have a wood privacy fence.
Okay. And then, now, the question my wife was asking is, will that wooden fence tie into the chain link fence for the pond?
I believe the chain link fence is inside of the property line.
And normally, there'd be a berm at the rear, is that correct, Mr. Hirlovich, with the fence along the planted area?
Yeah.
So, along the top, would be, there'd be a berm?
Yeah, I don't think there will be a berm in this particular case. It'll just be a wood privacy fence.
Along the side? That whole length?
Along that side.
Oh, there, yeah. Yes, along there.
Coming down the west side, Dean.
Yeah, well, that fence...
That's where the chain link fence is now.
Right, will they tie in together?
Or will it be complete, will there be another fence in front of that chain link?
I expect there would be a separate fence.
Okay.
Your concern, then, would have been that someone inside of the townhouse development could climb over the five-foot chain link fence.
I know that it can happen anytime, but I'm just saying with the playground there that it is more prone to happen.
Right.
That's my concern, because I've seen kids jump that fence. And I've seen coyotes jump that fence.
Right now, they're playing, the kids are playing on, because that, that subdivision is growing.
Yes.
And there's children in there now, you can see them.
I expect there would be a separate fence.
Okay.
Your concern, then, would have been that someone inside of the townhouse development could climb over the five-foot chain link fence?
Well, I know that it can happen anytime, but I'm just saying with the playground there, that it is more prone to happen.
Right.
That's my concern, because I've seen kids jump that fence. And I've seen coyotes jump that fence.
Right now, they're playing, the kids are playing on, because that subdivision is growing.
Yes.
And there's children in there now, and you can see them playing over there on that, they made a pile of dirt with, I guess, topsoil from when they developed all the homes there, and the kids are over there playing under now.
Yeah, we're just concerned that with the playground there, that there's more chance of them to jump in over the fence to get into the pond area.
Yes. There is a requirement for a privacy fence. What that relationship is, whether they're cheek to jowl, I can't say for sure.
Can we find out? When?
Hopefully, the applicant might be able to share that with us. Is that possible?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll have that as a question to the applicant who should speak next. Okay. Anything, you got your questions answered so far?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, council will hear the applicant, the applicant or his representative.
Good evening, Your Worship, honorable members of council, staff here this evening. My name is Chris Miller. I'm a planner with Upper Canada Consultants here in Niagara Region, and I'm here on behalf of our clients, Windleyan Development, Inc. I would just like to take the opportunity, first of all, to say that we've read the recommendation report, and we concur with staff's assessment and their recommendations. I was prepared to say that I have no other issues here, but obviously, we've got something that was raised this evening that I would like to address. The details on the cheek-to-jowl fencing that Mr. Hurlovich has mentioned, I'm not clear. There will be fencing, and they will be coming together, you know, at the top northwest corner, where your property would be. So there will be the fencing that is there. I also would agree with Mr. Hurlovich in the fact that kids jumping fences and things like that, supervision is what's required, and, you know, this kind of thing is not isolated. It would happen anywhere, and you would hope that, you know, parents are paying attention and things like that. So there's not really a heck of a lot I can do on that, in that regard, except, you know, hope that parents are paying attention to their children, and, you know, there are a lot of eyes on the streets. Certainly, the development is, will provide for a lot of families and a lot of eyes in there, so, you know, we hope that the community will take care of their children in the community. That's one of the aspects. So to be able to tell you conclusively where those fences are right now, I don't think I can do that. We did go through a site plan process, we initiated the site plan process originally, and then it was converted to the draft plan of vacant land condominium process. And this will still require us to have the site plans approved by the municipality as conditions of vacant land condominium. So if there's any finite details in there, you know, that will be also part of the later process. After the approval happens, the conditions will be cleared up, so, and we have to go through the remainder of the site plan process. So certainly, we'll be able to pinpoint where the fencing would be. So basically, council, that's all I've had.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Miller, Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I don't think you responded to the concerns that were outlined. Are you going to have, this is a condominium, new condominium development, are you going to have a fence around the perimeter of the property? And is that not normal, Mr., through the chair, to Mr. Hurlovich, is that not normal to have a fence around the perimeter of the property?
It is a requirement of the municipality typically, as Mr. Miller says, we obtain that through the site plan process when the plan develops.
Well, I think you're saying that you would butt up against the chain link fence, is that what you're saying?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, yes, the fencing would be around the perimeter of the site. I think that the confusion might be is, there's a five-foot chain link fence there now.
Yes.
Would there be a wood fence, a privacy fence, which is typically maybe six feet high, that would be right up against that?
Yes.
I'm not sure that that's what's happening here or not.
And I think that's what the question is. That's what they'd like to see happen. And if we have to make that decision now, then as a requirement, I think that's logical, and I don't, I'd rather see a board fence there, consistent around the condominium development. I don't know why you'd want to do otherwise, but I think that's what the people are looking for, more safety and to confine people in the condominium development. If you're going to do that, I would certainly support the efforts of the individuals suggesting that that's a logical way of doing it. And I would have thought, I've lived in a few condominiums, and they've always been completely fenced, and I would think that was appropriate. I don't think we should, we'll give you a choice, we want to approve it tonight, or we'll defer it until such time as you make up your mind.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, through you, I think part of the appeal of the units that would be along that side would be the amenity of the pond. So the pond itself would be a feature, a nice feature, in their backyard. And if we go put up a fence, that amenity space is essentially blocked.
Counselor Thompson?
Well, I'm glad you said that, because that would change my mind about the development. If they're looking for a fence there, finishing it off, who wants to look at a stagnant pond? I wouldn't, so I think you should fence it first.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship, and I think the Bongers' concern was more in regards to the playground, not in the individual units. So I can appreciate what the gentleman is saying, and the fact that, you know, he might not put up a fence in behind the actual units. But I think the Bongers are worried about the playground, and I guess the question would be, am they going to put up a fence there?
And perhaps, Counselors, so we could make that amendment to, or make it a condition of the approval, if you wish, to introduce that at the time we close the meeting. So, Mr. Miller, if you can't speak on behalf of your client, then I think council will have to deal with that.
Well, I mean, as far as, through you, Mr. Mayor, as far as a fence would go, fencing along the park space itself, if it has to be, you know, a board, or perhaps just a higher chain link fence, if that's acceptable to the counselor, as far as the children are concerned.
It's not me, maybe you can ask the people if they're happy with that.
Yes, I could just, I just want to hear from our solicitor for a second. Mr. Beaman?
Just in past practice, I'm from the former mayor, the resident's correction creator, but certainly, in the case one of prosecuting pool fences, who never accepted a chain link fence or pool as being added, but because of the small people's compliance, it's quite easy. So if we're looking for a safety factor, we'd not recommend the chain link fence. Because, for certain areas, children, that's the view of council officers, rest of the citizens, there's small people, plenty of children, who are on their hands, who never accepted it.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Well, I would ask that perhaps we consider dealing with this matter in the site plan process. This is still something that needs to go through the site plan process to be approved. So the draft plan of condominium is essentially a one of tenure.
I think you heard from council, there's a concern about that. We did have an expression from some of the neighbors, so if you can't commit it, then the council may wish to either defer your matter or deal with the matter and insert that as a condition of the approval of site plan.
Okay.
So are you able to speak on behalf of your client?
I would prefer that you defer the matter, so we can work out the details, if that's acceptable.
Okay. Counselor Thompson? Move a motion for deferral? Moved by Counselor Thompson. Oh, actually, excuse me, just before we do that, if you don't mind, the residents would like to speak, so, sir, could you have anything to further add? Okay.
Solicitor answers my question.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Counselor Thompson makes a motion to defer, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Two opposed, I presume. Mr. Hurlovich?
Just a quick statement, so I'm not sure that you closed the public meeting.
Oh, yes, okay. I'm sorry, yes, I should technically close the meeting first, so if I don't mind, I will declare the meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of vacant land condominium be concluded, and I'll entertain a motion with Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Please raise your hands. And opposed? Two, okay. Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you again. I have some comments to make this evening. Members of council, I'd like to begin with offering our sincere thanks to members of council, friends throughout the community, for your expressions of sympathy and condolences to the Cannavan family and myself on the recent passing of my father-in-law, Mr. Cecil Cannavan. On behalf of my wife and her family, we're very grateful for all the support that everyone showed to us. I thank you all. I'd like to continue as well by having some positive community notes that have taken place recently. Special congratulations to Margaritaville's Canadian operations on their successful job fair here in Niagara Falls last week. Almost 300 people were hired for a wide variety of new positions. Jimmy Buffett's Margaritaville is expected to open its doors here in Niagara Falls at the end of May. Congratulations as well to Donna Daglish and the team at Literacy Niagara on their seventh annual literacy day this past weekend at the McBain Center. The event was a great success with hundreds of young people and families coming out to take part again this year. It's worth noting as well that the amazing works of art recently on display at the Niagara Falls Public Library on Saturday, Mr. Floyd Fox held his first art exhibit at the age of 83 years, and I congratulate him as exceptional talent. City residents could view his creative drawings of planes, trains, and automobiles. The annual Stanford Center Volunteer Firefighters Association Easter egg hunt was an overwhelming success again this year. I wanted to thank all those who are dedicated as volunteers at the Fireman's Park for hosting an exceptional community event that welcomed thousands of people for a fun-filled day. And I was pleased recently to join Felix Pingue, Gino Ginardo, to present a donation of more than $130,000 to the orphaned and displaced children, the victims of the Bruci earthquake in Italy. We made the presentation in council chambers of the province of Lacula on behalf of the hundreds of local residents who donated through the six area culture clubs, being Club Italian in Niagara Falls, the Italian-Canadian clubs in Port Colborne and in Fort Erie, the Capri Club in Thorold, and Casa Dante in Welland, and Club Castro Pignano in Port Robinson. Volunteers have been diligently working to collect donations since the devastating earthquake in Italy one year ago, and we are pleased to see all the funds go directly to those family in need. As we look ahead to the coming weeks, I'd like to invite members of council and the community to attend the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee's annual Battle of the Bands. It's taking place this Thursday at the Optimus Hall at 7:00 p.m. Tickets are available through the Mayor's Office and also the McBain Center, or at each of the five high schools through committee members. The Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee also asks residents and business owners to join with them as they celebrate Green Week, the week of April 19th to 23rd, at their schools as well. They will be cleaning up trash and conserving electricity all week. Our park in the city committee is proud to be involved and will once again be hosting Arbor Day as celebrations in our community on Friday, April 23rd. Volunteers will be planting trees on our Olympic Trail near City Hall, and we look forward to joining them there. This concludes my remarks this evening. Let's move on to communications and comments from the city clerk. The first item is Coaches Association of Ontario requests that the week of April 17th to 26th be proclaimed as Ontario Coaches Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counselor Cario, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Item number two, the Trillium Gift of Life Network requesting that the week of April 18th to 25th, 2010, be proclaimed as Organ and Tissue Donor Awareness Week in the city of Niagara Falls, also requesting a flag raising. Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Number three, the Niagara Region requests that the week of May 16th to 22nd, 2010, be recognized as National Public Works Week in the city of Niagara Falls for the consideration of council. Moved by Counselor Cario, seconded by Counselor Diadati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Number four, Niagara Region correspondence regarding the federal government's New Horizon for Seniors program for actually council's consideration. Motion to receive. Moved by Counselor Cario, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, you heard the question. Any further comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Number five, Red Boss Pyrotechnics correspondence requesting fireworks display at Glenview Park for the Great Wolf Lodge visitors at various dates. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Cario. Once again, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Celebrate Old Town Town requests related, various requests related to the annual festival. Once again, for the consideration of council. Moved by Counselor Diadati, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Additional items for council's consideration? Mr. Clerk, we have two additional items, is that correct?
Yes, Your Worship. The first one is regarding the process we've engaged to designate Highway 420. Just due to the signage that's proposed, we're wanting council to sign off or endorse just a switch from Niagara Memorial Veterans Highway to Niagara Veterans Memorial Highway. The, if you take a look at the sample signage that the MTO does, we're thinking that it'd be more appropriate to have the word veterans in more prominence than the word memorial, but that's ultimately, we want council to sign off on that.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Diadati. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
The second one is really just to follow up on an item under new business from the last meeting regarding the toll rates, and it's just outlining to council that the Bridge Commission does have a policy in place where they monitor the fluctuations in exchange on a quarterly basis, and then try to reflect those fluctuations at the time. So it would seem that they do have a policy in place that takes account of the fluctuations in exchange rates.
Counselor Thompson?
Just wanted to express my opinion that the policy is completely inadequate, and it does not give fair and equitable opportunities to the Canadian visitors compared to the U.S. visitors. And personally, I'd like to express my opinion that the policy is, the Parks Commission is able to adjust their rates on a daily basis with respect to the bank rate. I'm not suggesting that, but to suggest it can be, it can't be adjusted more fairly and equitably than they've laid out in the policy is totally ludicrous, and I disagree with it. But who are you going to fight? Thank you.
Thank you. So, motion to receive. Moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Inoney. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Move on to reports. CEO report, filling vacancies on the Municipal Heritage Committee. Mr. Clerk, do you want to address this? I'm sorry, Counselor Wing.
Sure. I will move the Municipal Heritage Committee recommendations, Laurel Burke, I'm sorry, Laurel Campbell and Gary Burke.
Moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Inoney. Prefer the two applicants. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. An ask for ratification of Corporate Services Committee, called on Counselor Peter Angelo's chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. Following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. First, under reports, dealing with the water and sewer volumetric rates, it was recommended that council approve the 2010 water and sewer volumetric rates and fixed service charges and all other rates and fees as outlined in Appendix A. Secondly, the council approved staff's participation with regional staff and staff members of other local municipalities to review the methodology for establishing water and wastewater rates for 2011 and beyond. And thirdly, that council direct staff to review the billing process, including the relationship with Niagara Peninsula Energy, Inc., and to develop an alternate account structure for council's consideration once the regional review is completed. Second report, Your Worship, dealt with the Winter Festival of Lights line of credit. It was recommended that council approve the guarantee for the Winter Festival of Lights for $400,000, subject to staff being satisfied with the Winter Festival of Lights financials, as well that the city's credit guarantee only be utilized after the Winter Festival of Lights $100,000 line of credit has been fully utilized. Thirdly, that an annual review of the Winter Festival of Lights financial situation take place prior to council's approval of future grants to the festival. Fourth, that the Winter Festival of Lights provide monthly financial statements to the city during the period of the time that the city has the credit guarantee. Fifth item, that the annual credit guarantee amount be reduced annually in keeping with the Winter Festival of Lights improved financial situation. And lastly, Your Worship, that the city pay down the debt $100,000 annually through a reduction in the Winter Festival of Lights grant commencing in 2011, and I would so move the minutes.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I'll second it, but I think we had one last assertion there where we suggested that the financial staff review the documents for the Winter Festival of Lights prior to the final approval.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, and item number one, Your Worship, I said that council approve the credit guarantee for the Winter Festival of Lights of $400,000, subject to staff being satisfied with the Winter Festival of Lights financials. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All ready? You've heard that? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
One of you's directed opposed.
Counselor Inoney?
One of you's directed opposed.
Noted as opposed. Thank you. And we'll call on the ratification for, of community services, committees action, I should say, call on Counselor Inoney's chair, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. One, approval of the March 22nd, 2010 Community Services Minutes. Under reports, MW 2010-11, tender 210-15205, Hoytman Bridge Rehabilitation. Portage Road Crossing the Welland River from Macklin Street to Bridgewater Street. One, the contract we awarded to the Lowest Bitter Rankin Construction, Inc., at the tendered price of $3,845,766.50, and that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to execute the necessary contract documents. And that Ellis Engineering, Inc., be awarded the assignment of part-time construction supervision and contract administration for this project in the amount of $127,387.50. Under MW 2010-15, the Chippewa Boat Dock, that the report was to be deferred. Under RC 2010-09, Kerpar concession agreement, that the license agreement between GNBA and the city of Niagara Falls to operate the concession May 1st, through September 15th to 10th at Kerpar be approved, and that council approve the bylaw listed later in the April 12th, 210 agenda authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute the necessary agreement. Under RC 210, RNC 210-08, RFP P09-210, supply and delivery of over-the-counter beverages, vending, and related equipment. That the proposal from Coca-Cola Canada for the supply and delivery of over-the-counter cold beverages, vending, and related equipment at the Gale Center and Chippewa Willoughby Memorial Arena be approved, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the necessary contract documents. Under PD 210-29, 4519 and 4525 Queen Street, that the committee recommend to council the approval of commercial building and facade improvement grant for 4519 to 4525 Queen Street, subject to the owner satisfying all the program requirements, including all necessary permits and entering into an agreement with the city, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the grant agreement. Under TS 210-23, the Falls Shuttle Service Amendment, that council approve the proposed enhancement to the Falls Shuttle Service, and I so move.
Moved by Council Anoni, seconded by Council Diadati. Once again, you heard the question. Any comments? No comments? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Move on to consent agenda. Pleasure, council. Moved by Council Fisher, seconded by Council Peter Angelo. Any further discussions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional, any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws to be noted for the council this evening?
None, Your Worship.
This time, I'm going to ask for a motion to reduce the bylaws. Bylaws to be given a first reading. Moved by Council Peter Angelo, seconded by Council Diadati. You've, once again, council has heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Bylaws 2010-48 to 2010-54, write a first time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Council Peter Angelo, seconded by Council Diadati. Once again, council has heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Bylaws 2010-48 to 2010-54, write a second and third time and pass.
Thank you. Any new business this evening? I have Council Wing, Council Diadati.
A few years ago, the city commissioned an animal control review, and that resulted in what we call the Bandell Report. Among its many recommendations was that physical improvements be made to the shelter operated by the Niagara Falls Humane Society, or alternately that the city construct its own and relationships with the community improved, and now we have no question about the city setting up its own operation instead. We do have problems. At the meeting, Humane Society Board meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, we posted yet another deficit. We have struck a budget review committee to look under every rock we can find there for any possible cost savings that we can find, but I, and I think that is going to help, but it won't be enough. Last year, some Niagara Falls Humane Society representatives negotiated with city staff toward a new contract, and we haven't, I understand the negotiations were finalized. Everybody went away with an understanding, but the contract has not yet been prepared to be placed before council. One of the outcomes of those negotiations were a $25,000 increase in the contract funding to cover the increase in operating costs which came out of the improved, physical improvements they made to the shelter. I chucked a gain today, I say, you know, was this $25,000 above and beyond what we ended up doing as a forgivable mortgage for the improvements they made, which wiped out the reserves? And I was told that, yes, the $25,000 was money that was earmarked by the city for potential commitment to building a new facility, but with us performing the renovations and improving our relationship, the money didn't require that earmarking anymore. So, it was stated they would give this money to us to assist with our increase in operation fees. Now, that $25,000 was in our budget earlier this year. We took it out when we took out all new monies way back in our budget discussions. And now I realize then, well, we're not putting any new monies in. We'll just have to see if we can keep going without it. However, since then, council decided to give $50,000 in new monies to the Greater Niagara General Foundation, which wasn't something that had been negotiated previously. This was just the result of council being lobbied. So, we said no to these $25,000 that had been negotiated and yes to $50,000 that hadn't. So, that being the situation, we need to put the $25,000 for the Humane Society that was negotiated back in. You know, I could support no new monies because we were trying to accomplish something, but that went out the window. So, that being the situation, we need to do this because the increase in operating fees was because of the improvements made as a result of the Bandell Report. So, my motion is we put that $25,000 we removed earlier this year back in.
Is there a second to the motion? Second it? Okay, Council Anoni. Any further discussion? It's Council Peter Angelo.
Yeah, I got a question, Your Worship. Where would the money come from?
Good question.
Answer it. The same place that the $50,000 for the GNTH Foundation is coming from?
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Can you repeat the motion? Sorry, the council secretary and I were talking about something else, and we missed the actual motion.
Sorry. There was $25,000 additional contract monies for the Niagara Falls Humane Society that was in our budget earlier this year. When we took out all new monies, we wiped that out along with everything else, like all the other requests. This wasn't really a request. It was something, I understand, that was negotiated, but we took it out, and it needs to go back in.
And Council Peter Angelo was asking where it was from, so, yes, Council Anoni?
And I think it's important to note that when the Humane Society was here, the council itself acknowledged that the reasons we were giving them additional monies, I think it was the loan with the grant that they came to us for, was because they actually implemented the improvements we told them to do. So, they didn't, they didn't go on their own and decide to lobby us and say, we just need more money. We said, your Bandell report came in, fix your facility, and they did. So, their cost overruns were because we told them to do it, and yet we took out their $25,000. So, that's why I seconded it, because I didn't, I didn't consider it new money. I considered it money as a result of the direction we gave them.
Our C.A.O. is not here this evening, as you know, but I'm going to ask Mr. Harrison if he can address that. There were some interim discussions that went on with the Humane Society, but, Mr. Harrison, are you able to elaborate further?
Well, maybe the clerk can elaborate more on the discussions with the Humane Society, but the question as to where the money would come from, the budget is right now balanced. If you add an expenditure, then the natural implication would be that I'd have to raise the levy. So, certainly, we could look and see if there's other areas that we could, we could find the money, but certainly, at the last board meeting, at the last council meeting, the budget was balanced. It didn't include the $25,000. It did include the $50,000 for the General Hospital Foundation. So, if you're adding a amendment to the budget, then we would take it from a minor adjustment to the levy.
Thank you. Have the clerk and then Council Thompson.
I'd also, I don't have it in front of me, but you'll recall, we did do a report in the fall, just before you were starting into budget negotiations, and there were four recommendations in that report, what I called the four-pronged report. And that came about through meetings with the Humane Society Board, trying to figure out ways to help them financially, and part of that included that additional $25,000. It included also a grant for the spay and neutering work, also the increase in the licensing fees, and there was a fourth one. I mean, like I said, I don't have it in front of me, but that's what council's decision was. That is really what you've decided on. I mean, I think we're getting caught up in the term agreement. There was an agreement by staff in the Humane Society at those meetings that we would bring forward that report for council to consider, which we did, and council, if you recall, deferred that report and the decisions surrounding it, save and accept the fourth prong, which was the increase in the licensing fees. You then had a subsequent report that came to council. The council did approve, so I think it probably makes sense for me to bring those reports forward to let you see what was actually agreed to, so there's some understanding. I mean, there is a discussion, obviously, with the Humane Society and us over the years to finalize an agreement, meaning the rules of engagement on what we expect from them. I see that as separate and apart from the financial issues, which we were trying to work with them prior to that sort of formal agreement as far as what our expectations with them are. I mean, I think the bottom line has always been, since the new board came in place, we've had an excellent working relationship with them. We are, you know, going forward, I guess, as far as continuing, continuing to work with them, so they should have no fear that that's, you know, subject to us going elsewhere like it was a few years ago when we did actually do a request for proposal to see if there was maybe another provider out there for animal control services. So, basically, we feel as staff going forward, we've got a partnership with the Humane Society that will probably be more formalized in the future with that agreement as far as the, what we're, our expectations of them are. But I mean, as far as the financials, my opinion is the council already gave its decision on that based on those two reports, but what I'll do, like I said, is email you those reports so everybody understands exactly what was agreed to, and if the board maybe has a request further to those two reports, it's up to them to put something in writing to us.
Okay, Council Thompson?
Well, I agree with the comments of the clerk. Maybe we should have some reports back, but the mystery of where we got the funds was part of the reserves that we had accumulated from the sale of the property on McLeod Road, I believe. That's where we got the funds for the hospital board, and I think the 25 would be insignificant taking it out of that, but I think it's prudent to look at the reports because I remember spending some time on that. And I, I think that Mr. Todd, coming in from St. Catherine's, had a totally different perspective about the Humane Society in St. Catherine's compared to what we do here, and I thought he was coming in with some thoughts and recommendations about some economies of scale, so maybe we could have a full report plus the previous reports brought back to council for consideration.
And Council Thompson, I think I, if I'm correct, I think we took it from the interest portion of the proceeds from the sale of that land. So, members of council, we've heard now from the clerk, Council Wing and Council Anoni, you have a motion on the table. Do you still wish to have that proceed, or do you want to? Pardon?
I'll read the first.
Okay, so withdraw that?
Yes.
Okay. Want to ask for a report to be submitted? Okay, moved by Council Wing, seconded by Council Anoni?
And to add to that, maybe an official request from the Humane Society also, that your suggestion, Dean, was really good, if they want more, have them actually put a request, because I think they were of the understanding that, that $25,000 was also coming. That's the understanding I get from talking. So, if there's confusion, put a written request in and say, look, this is where our problem lies, we need the $25,000 to operate.
I know our C.A.O. had some dialogue with them, and as Council Thompson suggested, he was talking about other operations and comparing the two, and he had the benefit of his information, his input, and so I'm not sure if that had been finalized, but I know that when the report comes back, I'm sure his, his information will be included. Okay?
We're going to forward the old reports. I'm not sure what this new report's supposed to say. I mean, I think what it'll do, yeah, we'll give the new report, or sorry, the old reports, and then from there, if the Humane Society has a specific ask, they should put it in writing. You know, the, the, we've been dealing with Mr. DePaolo, Mr. DeWella, to a lesser extent, Mr. Boone and Mr. DeRoche. They seem to understand exactly what council agreed to. Maybe the rest of the board maybe wasn't as sure, but, you know, we, we've been having dialogue with them all through this process and impressing upon them that although staff may make a recommendation, it's ultimately up to council whether they approve that recommendation.
So, we're going to request those reports be forwarded to us at next council. Okay, members of council, is that clear then, when you're voting on that? Any further comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And I'm sure that Mr. Todd will give his input at the time. If he could, he would be doing so today. Okay? Calling on Council Diadati for new business.
Thank you, Worship. Worship, real quickly, I read in the paper with great interest recently, Mayor Martin brought forward a suggestion to the region. I'd like to make a motion supporting the idea of significantly reducing the size of regional government. I know we've done it many times before, but maybe it's timely since the recommendation is coming from within. I believe less is more, and reforming the governance structure is, is long overdue.
Okay. Thank you, council. I'll take that motion to start, and I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, before I ask for a second, I'm going to ask the clerk, he's waving his hand here, so.
The reason why I say this, and I say this partly tongue-in-cheek, I know it's been received in the press as the Martin Proposal, but you'll, if you go back to a council agenda in 2003, you'll discover it was actually the Irfita Proposal. Your council already made that proposal back in 2003. There was a committee in place at the time at the region where Mayor McMullin, Mayor McMullin now, he was a regional councillor at the time, had a committee called Reshaping the Region. And at the time, our council then had a little subcommittee, which was Counselor Janvery Poole, Mayor Thompson at the time, Counselor Puttick, and there was a fourth, I'll have to look at the report. Norm didn't show up for the meeting, but that's not, it's neither here nor there, but the proposal, but the proposal that we put forward to the region was exactly the same proposal, which is a 19-member regional council. So, I'd like to think that great minds think alike. I'm not, I'm not accusing Mayor Martin of plagiarism, although I'm a little suspect that he came up with the exact same numbers that I did, but I'm sure Fort Erie will send us a correspondence and we can support it and also crow about the fact we were seven years ahead of the game.
Maybe the clerk could, and the wordsmith that he is, could add to that motion, that since the idea did get its genesis here, that we'd like to re-support the idea, and hopefully this time, we'll get a little bit of momentum and get it put through. So, I'd make that motion, Your Worship.
Okay, moved by Council Diadati, seconded by Council Peter Angelo. Let's get any further comments?
Corio, I have it, he lost 45 on the next week's conference.
Okay. Yes, Council Wing?
Actually, I'm leaning towards Corey's sentiments on the matter. I'm not sure that reducing the numbers is the way to go, and you have the small municipalities having one person only, you know, I don't know, to me, it's just not as representative as it should be, so I'll vote against it.
Council Anoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was the biggest opponent of us going from 12 to eight. Didn't think it would work.